Okay, welcome and thank you for joining us tonight. My name's Heidi McCutcheon. I am the Executive Director for the Shelton-Mason County Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber is the oldest and largest business organization in Mason County. We were established in 1922 and currently we have nearly 400 businesses as members. It's my pleasure to be your host tonight along with John Lester, who has served as the 2017 President of the Chamber Board and is the General Manager for the Shelton-Mason County Journal.
Thank you, Heidi. And thank you to each of our candidates. Your willingness to serve our community through public office is no easy task, especially with the disheartening news we received last night with Ryan Wheaton's resignation as City's Manager. The Chamber Board has shared an excellent relationship with him at the helm. We look forward to hearing from you tonight as we look forward towards our future. Tonight's event is being livestreamed and recorded thanks to our partners at Hood Canal Communication and Mason Web TV. I'd like also to thank the members of the Chamber Government Relations Committee. We stand for acknowledgement for all their help in putting together -- me too. With all their help in putting tonight's event together. Before we get started with our candidates, I invite you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we're happy to bring to you the candidates for Shelton City Council. As you likely know, there are four open seats and 15 candidates vying for those seats. So as many of tonight's candidates are new to the process of running for office, we did share half of the questions with them ahead of time. Each candidate will be asked to answer one question that is new to them and one question that they have received ahead of time.
Our format for this evening will include hearing from all four seats at one time -- or one at a time, excuse me. And we'll begin with Seat 4. We'll hear an opening statement from each candidate on the role of the City Commissioner and what makes them so qualified for this position. Each candidate will be allowed 90 seconds for their answer. Lisa Perry, sitting here in front, is here and will be signaling you when you have 15 seconds left of your time and when your time has ended. The time limits will be strictly adhered to, so please -- so they can end up hearing from each and every one of the candidates.
With that, let's get things started. We'll begin with candidate Jason Koots and hear his opening statement. Jason, you have 90 seconds.
I'm Jason Koots. I want to thank everybody for coming out. I think what the council and what my position would represent is purely a mouthpiece for the citizens. I reached out to Ryan Wheaton today. I think it's important that we acknowledge what we have lost and what must have gone on behind the scenes to create someone so tied to our community to feel like he needed to go. That's the kind of thing I'm looking to rid the local government of. I think that a lot of the times, things are pushed on an individual's own agenda and I'm purely running on the stance of the people. I don't live or die based on the results of this election. I just feel that it's time for someone who really is tied to the community, isn't pursuing their own agenda or political career, to step up. And I believe I'm that guy. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Next, we'll hear from Jess Mosley. Jess?
My name's Jess Mosley. I've lived in Shelton since 1998. I worked for Mason County for 15 years before retiring in 2015. And I believe that government should be of the people, by the people, and for the people. I think that having a goal, a strategic plan, and adhering to it is important. I think that it's not set in stone, but at the same time, it needs to be adhered to so that we make it a stable community and we welcome all people who move to this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Eric Gonesco?
Hi, I'm Eric Gonesco. I'm a resident, business owner, and concerned parent in the city of Shelton. We have made progress in the city of Shelton, but we can do better. Supporting our schools, we can do better. Paving our roads, pothole repairs, we can do better. Supporting the police and fire, we can do better. Supporting nonprofits in town that take care of our homeless, we can do better. Affordable housing starts with the city, we can do better. All of us are here tonight are your voice, your vote on the new council. I'm asking for your trust to elect me to the City of Shelton Council. Most important is to vote. Please vote for your candidate of choice. Do not leave your vote on the kitchen table. We can all do better. And if I still have time, the role of the council is more of an oversight of the City Manager. A City Manager runs the entire city and staff, and we're just oversight. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Jess, this question will go to you first. You'll be given one and a half minutes for your response. Many in the community are asking for more civil discourse among local elected officials, whether it be during meetings or on social media. Do you agree with this sentiment? If so, how would you improve the situation? And if you don't agree, please explain why not.
I think civility in government is important. I think respect goes a long way towards helping people to communicate in an open format that they're comfortable in and expressing views that are not necessarily mainstream because having an opinion and being a representative from the community brings a different point of view, a different focus, and a different objective that can be melded into a plan for whatever the discourse is and find some form of compromise. I mean, it should not always be capitulation. It should be a compromise so that the best of all things come together.
Great, thank you, Jess. Eric, you're up next. Again, many in the community are asking for more civil discourse among local elected officials. Do you agree with this sentiment? If so, how would you improve the situation? If you don't agree, please explain why not.
Absolutely agree. I think that we have not compromised in the city on many issues. And yes, we both have different views, or all seven of us will have different views, but we need to compromise for what's best for the citizens, business, and the city.
Great, thank you. Jason, do you agree with this sentiment? If so, how would you improve the situation? And if you don't agree, why not?
I'm sorry, would you read it just one more time?
Sure. "Many in the community are asking for more civil discourse among local elected officials, whether it be during meetings or on social media. Do you agree with this sentiment? If so, how would you improve the situation? And if you don't agree, please explain why not."
I agree that things should be -- that we should aim to keep things civil. But I think if everybody shares the same opinion, we don't grow. I think that when people come together and discuss things and disagree and participate, that's how Shelton grows. The recent environment of Shelton government hasn't been the most civil, but I think the interest is at a peak. And I think that if good comes about through bad, I think that's what we're aiming for. Obviously, I don't -- if we could do it a better way, that's important. But when I came out with the things I came out with, it wasn't the most civil thing, but people stood up and people thanked me and people were happy to finally start airing things out that maybe they were afraid to say in the interests of keeping things civil. And I think today, we're better off having come through that. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, we'll have you answer this question first. Again, you'll be given one and a half minutes for your response. "For many generations, our region's economy has revolved around natural resources, both in the forest and with shellfish. What sectors and employers do you want to be the core of our future economic development? Or do you believe it's better to be a suburb of Olympia?"
Well, I think the suburb is a nice start, but I think that we need to grow Shelton. We need to grow our economy. We need jobs. We need housing. Sorry. But I do believe that there's nothing wrong with being a bedroom community in Olympia, but we do also need our own future.
Jason, again, "For many generations, our region's economy has revolved around natural resources, both forest and shellfish. What sectors and employers do you want to be the core of our future economic development? Or do you believe it's better to be a suburb of Olympia?"
Shelton isn't a suburb of Olympia in my mind, but I think it's important we remember we're also not Olympia. I think that we need to reinvest in our manufacturing core. I think that we need to also establish opportunities inside the city limits. I'm happy to see the city invest in an economic development plan. I think it adds room for businesses to come in. I would like to see Shelton become the place that people want to live, that people want to have their business there. And I think that the trend has been people grow up, maybe start businesses and move away. I'd like to see the city work towards a climate that's industry-friendly economically. Like I said, I think the economic development plan is a great start, and I'd like to see that explored.
Great, thank you. Jess, "For many generations, our region's economy has revolved around natural resources, both shellfish and forest. What sectors and employers do you want to be the core of our future economic development? Or do you believe it's better to be a suburb of Olympia?"
Well, I do think that currently, we are a quasi-bedroom community of Olympia. If you've ever tried to go south between 6:00 in the morning and, say, 7:30 or 8:00, and you find the bottleneck just past Steamboat Island, you realize that a lot of people are leaving this area to go to work somewhere else because that's where the jobs are. I think that our natural resources, we've gotten to the point now where with synthetic material, that we're finding less and less need for it. And so our natural resources, especially in the area of tourism, is important. I think we have some prime opportunities with the railway that currently runs through town and the Mill 5 out there and the people that are interested in creating some type of a living museum that pays tribute to our history. We're currently, like mine, for example, we have a call moving Shelton one barge at a time with the mining operation out off on the water by the Oakland Bay. But I think something along the lines where we bring people in and we create jobs. We have a great school system here, and we send our kids to college and they come back and they have nowhere to apply their trades. And because of that, we tend to lose more and more, and we become older and older, and we are eventually going to become either a retirement community or a bedroom community of Olympia if we don't change our ways.
Thank you, Jess. Those are the questions we have prepared for you guys tonight. We will be moving on to closing statements. Each of you will have one minute, and Jason, we'll hear from you first.
All right, thanks again for coming out. Like I said before, I think it's time that Shelton thinks about what's really going on, thinks about why great people in our community leave. How is the local government, how has it alienated the best thing to happen to our city in a long time? I think we all know the answer. We might not want to admit the answer, and I stand for everything that is the opposite of that. I stand for what you see is what you get, you know? I will look you in the eye and tell you what I think. And I think that there probably aren't a lot of people that would disagree on that. I love the participation. I'm glad that our local government has become such a great topic. Thanks again.
Thank you, Jason. Jess?
First off, thank you, everybody, for being here and all the technology that's being used so we can go home and look at what we should have done and what we did do and what we didn't do. I believe that anybody who lives in Shelton has the right to a safe home that's not dangerous, that's not outdated, that's not antiquated, that's not something that would be harmful to young minds and developing bodies. I think that some of the services that the city can provide, in addition to not only commercial property but residential property that's used as rental property, is to make sure that we have a standard for homes in here and that we use the housing that we have now and upgrade and update to make it usable so that we don't have what I call urban sprawl, where we move away from our homes and they become less owner-occupied and more rental properties. And then, next thing you know, the infrastructure starts falling and the homes fall into disrepair and sales values go down. So I do believe that the quality of life is important in Shelton and that we should work to do that.
Thank you, Jess. Eric?
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I have attended hundreds of city meetings, only missed a few, and I know the issues. I've watched and learned, and I'm ready to work on day one. You have a chance to elect eight of us to advance to the general election in April. I will offer common sense voting. If it don't add up, I won't vote for it. In the end, seven people will make the decisions on how we spend your money. History shows we don't seem to ask tough questions. The City Manager does run the city, and we are the oversight. We don't want any more unused infrastructure projects as you, the taxpayers, pay in the bill. We can't solve every problem. I will be your voice and your vote and do my best. Thank you. Vote, vote, vote. We can all do better.
Thank you. At this point, we'll take a quick break as we reset the stage for candidates vying for Shelton City Council, Seat 5. Again, my thanks to Jason Koots, Jess Mosley, and Eric Gonesco for joining us tonight.
Thank you. (APPLAUSE).
Frustrated by rising cable prices? You're not the only one. As your local cable TV provider, we work hard to give you the channels you want to watch the local news, enjoy family night, and cheer on your favorite sports team. We also fight to keep your rates fair, but at the negotiating table, large corporate broadcasters demand higher fees for their programming. As TV viewership goes down, broadcast rates continue to go up. It's not fair. None of us should cover their losses. Visit keeptheconnections.com for more information on how we're working for you.
Welcome back, everyone. I'm happy to introduce the candidates for City, Shelton City Council, Position 5. Unfortunately, we have -- David Brown has the flu, so he's unable to join us tonight. We'll begin with opening statements. We're holding the same process for all the seats. With Deidre Peterson. Deidre, you have one and a half minutes, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming here this evening. I know how valuable your time is, and I hope that we're able to provide you with some insight as to each of the candidates and where we stand for you. My background is fourth-generation Sheltonian. I grew up in this community. I went away to college and earned my bachelor's degree in Business Administration with a concentration in Operations Management, and I felt the call to come home and apply my skills here. The role of the City Council is to provide legislative support to the city, primarily is to set policy. And so what that means is that we need to have a City Council that understands that their role is to set the vision and to be a support system for the city residents, to ask the questions, to do the homework, and to make sure that we support a city staff and a community to do what needs to be done to move our community forward. I'm hopeful that I will be one of the folks that you're entrusting with that duty, and should you have any questions, I welcome the opportunity to speak with each of you.
Thank you, Deidre. Josh Johnson?
Hi, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. I think that as a lifelong resident of Shelton and a small business owner for almost 20 years, that I'm uniquely suited for this position. I don't have a degree, but I have life experience. I have three kids, two grandkids, and above all else, I think that the council needs common sense. Far too often, I read about decisions that are made by elected officials, and I just shake my head. And for years, I've been on the sideline shaking my head. And I finally said, this is the time to do something about it. So that's why I'm running.
Thank you, Josh. Marilyn Vogel?
As Deidre said, one of the primary reasons we have a council is to set policy. It's the job of the City Manager and the city staff to implement that policy, but the council needs to listen to the citizens, to the people who live here, to the people who work here, own businesses here, and sort through the various issues and constraints that people face to develop policy that will make the situation as workable for as many people as possible. I think one of the things I bring is extensive experience in a variety of areas in Shelton. I came here about six and a half years ago after I retired from a position in university administration, but I had also taught. I've been a reference librarian, and so I have the skills to do the background research. When I came here, I put those skills to use volunteering. I'm currently on the County Planning Advisory Commission, the City Civil Service Commission, and I participate in the Housing Coalition. One of the things this experience brings is an appreciation that our policy needs to be set in the context of county policy and state regulation, and I think I bring the skills necessary to do that.
Thank you, Marilyn. Josh, this question will go to you first. "A number of our commercial buildings require improvements to meet current codes in order to be leased or rented. Unfortunately, rehabilitation costs often far exceed what the real estate market will bear, and it simply doesn't pencil for someone to take on this project. Do you believe the city has a role in redeeming this problem? Why or why not?"
That's a good question. As a lot of people know, there are a lot of vacant buildings downtown. I think the city does play a role. They should make it as friendly of an environment to small business to invest. A lot of times, people are scared away just because of the exorbitant fees the city tries to pass on to small business. The end goal should be to get businesses to come here. It shouldn't be how much money you can capture on the front end. It should be always how much taxes are they going to pay, who they're going to employ, and the revenue they're going to generate from whatever business that brings in. So yes, I think they should play a role, and I think they can play a role.
Thank you. Marilyn?
I agree that the city has a role to play. Buildings are vacant for a variety of reasons, and one of the issues downtown is the potential for pollution that makes development very difficult. The commission a couple of years ago had an opportunity to apply for an EPA grant that would have surveyed potential brownfields and then would have allowed further application for grants to help clean those up. I wish we had done that because it's tremendously expensive for someone to come into an area that's polluted and rebuild or reconstruct. I know we have a lot of buildings that are standing that are vacant. I've heard conflicting stories about builders being told one thing and then told another thing and finding themselves in a muddle of permits and fees. I would like to see us work as much as possible with the concept of restricted or temporary permits. If items that don't directly impact safety are too expensive in the immediate future, I would like to see the city be able to grant a permit to refurbish, construct, allow a business to open, to accumulate the funds that would allow them then to make the necessary requirements at a later time.
Thank you, Marilyn. Deidre?
I think as everyone at the table recognizes, the city absolutely has a role to play in economic development. And one of the things that was identified in the comprehensive plan is the retail leakage that we see in Shelton. How many of you go for your weekend shopping and stop in Olympia to get something and then realize, well, I'm already out? There's a lot of loss of sales, and that not only is tax dollars coming back into this community, but it also is jobs for our neighbors, it's people owning businesses. And if we can be a part of the solution as far as allowing folks to rehabilitate buildings and invest in their infrastructure, then I think we're going to be much more successful in doing that. I think the city absolutely has a role to play, and I think that some of those steps might be small. It could be trying to coordinate with the county as well, so we're looking at a streamlined process. It could be things that -- we're looking at incentives. We have a lot of things as far as the zoning and preserving the historic downtown, which are absolutely integral to who we are, but it doesn't mean that there's not room for growth. So if we can, as a city, I think, look at things with fresh eyes and solicit ideas from the best and brightest about what that might look like, I think we have an obligation to do so. There are wonderful opportunities for us to collaborate, and I think that will be the key in moving this forward.
Thank you, Deidre. Marilyn? We'll hear from you first on this next question. "One of the stated advantages of a seven-member commission is that the format will allow for subcommittees to work on specific projects with staff. Assuming subcommittees are related to public safety, public works, and finance, which committee would you most likely be a part of, and what are a few of the goals which you'd like to work on? What other areas of particular interest of you?"
I'll work with that assumption, but I guess I would rather see subcommittees in other areas than the given ones. My choice, I think, of those would be public works. I'm tremendously interested in how we develop infrastructure, but those are built on the old commission model, those three divisions. I would rather see a subcommittee on roads. I would rather see a subcommittee on affordable housing. I would rather see a subcommittee on small business incentives. If we could structure subcommittees in that way, I would definitely be interested in a housing subcommittee. We need housing at all levels. We need housing for our managers and our executives. We need housing for younger people just beginning careers. We need housing for low-income people, and we need housing for people who are currently unsheltered. I think that's critical. So I've fiddled with the question a bit. I hope you don't mind.
Not at all. Thank you. Deidre?
Some of you may know that my husband is a civil engineer, and my father's worked for Mason County for 30 years, so perhaps the obvious answer would be public works. That said, I think that I would find a spot in any of those committees really an opportunity to give back to the community. I think that I have skills and qualifications to speak to each of them very differently. I do have a business degree. I ran my own small business planning events. I know how to read a budget. I know how to look at the numbers, and I think that with the $43 million in debt, that's something that we have to be absolutely thinking of with every decision. How does this affect our taxpayers? How does this affect my neighbors? But I would also say that any of those three really give an opportunity to collaborate with not only the other agencies and nonprofits, but to hear from the experts and really find out how we can start to make changes that are going to affect the day-to-day lives of our citizens.
Thank you, Deidre. Josh?
Can you just --
I'm happy to repeat the question. It makes it a lot easier when I don't have to, but I would be more than happy to do that. "One of the stated advantages of a seven-member commission is that the format will allow for subcommittees to work on specific projects with staff. Assuming subcommittees are related to public safety, public works, and finance, which committee would you most like be a part of, and what are the few goals which you would like to work on? What other areas are of particular interest to you?"
Um, well, I think, first off, I'd like to say that I, I don't like putting constraints on the committees. I, I think that with seven people especially, you're uniquely suited to be able to, to talk about these things on a priority basis. Um, I, I don't like the old models Marilyn said of, of being pigeonholed into one or the other. Um, I think, again, that common sense can be applied to all those. Uh, I, I don't know that, uh, somebody has to be assigned to public works or, uh, dealing with housing. I think that common sense, uh, is the great equalizer here. Um, if, if you had to pin me down on one, I'd say that, uh, I'm interested in making a, a business environment in town that is friendly for small business, easy for people to invest, and, uh, make homes here, buy homes, and make a life here instead of people aspiring to get out of town or, or to leave th- this town. Um, I, I would say business, and I'd really like to be involved with, uh, coming up with some common sense solution to address the homeless situation in town.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you for your answers. With that, we'll begin our closing statements. Each of you will be given one minute, and Deidre will begin here with you first.
Thank you. Once again, everyone who came out tonight, um, I'm so glad to see you here. Um, I know tonight gave you just a snapshot of who we are as candidates, and I hope that as the campaign continues, you will ask us questions and tell us what your concerns are. Because I really am hopeful that this new seven-person council will afford a much greater, um, perspective as we approach city issues. You know, there's such an opportunity for us to, um, look at things holistically and consider the talents and assets of our people and of our community. And I think that if we're able to do that, and, you know, as is said tonight, with a little bit of common sense, I really truly feel that we have an opportunity here. Um, certainly, there's work to be done, but I'm hopeful that each of you will tell us what's important to you, ask the hard questions, and more than anything, vote come February 13th.
Thank you. Josh?
Uh, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Uh, people keep asking me why I'm running. And it's pretty simple. It's, it's not for the money, obviously. Uh, I feel really passionate about providing a business-friendly environment downtown. And I think that one of the steps we have to do first is to address the homeless issue. We have to stop acting like this is a dirty word we can't talk about. Uh, I want to be involved in coming up with some common sense solutions that work for everybody, that are goal-oriented and quantifiably suc- quantifiable success with those goals. And, uh, if you honor me with your vote, that's what I'm going to work on. Thanks.
Thank you, Josh. Marilyn?
Again, thank you all for coming out. I was absolutely delighted at the enthusiasm about people, from people who filed for these positions. One of the things that was said when we talked about shifting to a council was that, oh, you'll never be able to get people to run for those positions. And so, I am thrilled that there are 15 of us. I am thrilled that you have hard decisions to make about who to vote for. My hope is that we will likewise have record voter turnouts. And so, I hope you are all registered and plan to vote. I would like to ask each of you to contact two or three of your neighbors and say, are you registered to vote? Are you going to? Have you mailed in your ballot? And to help them get registered if they're not. We need to bring some stability to our city government. We have major issues from staff turnover to potential lawsuits to problems that I hope I can help solve.
Thank you, Marilyn. Thank you. We're going to take a few-minute break here to reset the stage for the candidates vying for Shelton City Council Seat 6. So, once we get it clear here, Seat 6, people want to come up, that'd be great.
I admit, I did try another TV provider. It sounded like a great deal. But I quickly realized it wasn't. When I read the fine print, I was locked into a long-term contract with a huge cancellation fee. So, I came back to HCC. They're more reliable, the service is local, and I save, bundling internet and phone with them too. And I'm a lot happier now.
Great service from a local company. Stay with HCC.
I'm happy to introduce to you the candidates for Shelton City Council, Position 6. I will begin with opening statements with Sam Pettis and hear from him on the role of city commissioner and what makes him most qualified for that position. You have 90 seconds for your answer.
Hi, my name is Sam Pettis. Uh, lived in Shelton 20 years, worked for, uh, Mason County PD3 for 24 years. I've, uh, seen a lot of things from the outside, looking in, uh, complaining. And then this came up and thought to myself, well, instead of complaining, let's do something about it. There's a lot of things that need to be touched with in the city of Shelton. Uh, roads is big, the budget is big. Uh, the money we owe is even bigger. We got to find a way to pay that off. But besides that, that's the reason I'm here.
Great, thank you. Next, we'll hear from Steve Thompson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am, uh, running for Position 6 on our newly expanded Shelton City Council. I have called Shelton my home since 1983. And I worked at, in Shelton at certified manufacturing from 1973 to 1992. And I was employed with inner-city transit in Olympia from 1992 until my retirement in October of 2016. I'm a newcomer to the political arena, but every politician has stood in my shoes at one time or another. I feel that I bring a number of assets that were proved valuable to this council. I believe strongly in volunteering, as it is good for the soul. And I have done that for many years, just not in the political arena. I see this as a chance to give my time and my energy to this community. I will bring honesty, integrity, common sense, transparency, and accessibility to this council. My platform is simple. I have a vision of what this community could be. I have a number of ideas how Shelton could, uh, attract business. Uh, I'm looking at tourism. Uh, we need to bring revenue and bolster our economy. And the timber industry is gone, so we need to find something else. Uh, secondly, I believe we need to work closely with the county to attract manufacturing types of jobs. We should provide incentives.
Thank you, Steve. Bailey, you're up.
Hi, my name is Bailey Syrick. I am a recent graduate from Washington State University. I graduated with a political science degree. While I was in school, I actually worked on a city council campaign for Andy Ryder in, for Andy Ryder in Lacey. And that experience really opened my eyes to the importance of local politics. And I loved talking to people and learning how I could be a voice to people. And what I think I bring to this position is youth. I think it's important that you have some youth in your new city council. I don't have any longstanding biases like many other people. And so, I think it's really important that we bring a diverse group of people to this. Um, I've also always worked in small businesses, so I understand the importance and the struggle of owning one. So, I feel it's really important to help local businesses in any way we can. And most importantly, I will always use my platform to be a voice to the people. I will always listen to people, citizens, listen to their problems, and use that, use their words to vote accordingly for what they think is best for the city. And then I also wanted to thank the chamber for changing the random draw to be viewed by people. I really think it's important, and it was a step towards transparency, and I thank you.
Joe Schmidt?
Thanks. I see a community where the people's voice is the strongest, where families and businesses can thrive, where safety and prosperity, uh, build a strong community. I'm a father, a husband, your neighbor. I'm an Air Force veteran, and I have been a volunteer firefighter in Shelton. Simply put, the role of the city council is to serve the public. I am a public servant. Early on, I was taught the value of hard work. My father worked long hours in our, for our family's, uh, small plumbing and heating business. Our phone would ring many nights and weekends. My father's dedication put food on our table. But that's not all. He made sure our community had running water and heat during the frigid Buffalo, New York winters. Sometimes, his customers could not afford the bill. Sometimes it was a barter system. But his lesson was simple. It's important to be part of a community. It is to honor his values, these values of hard work, dedication, and service. And that is why I hope to be able to serve you on the city council.
Thank you, Joe. Steve, you'll answer this first. You have 90 seconds. Please tell us about an action or a vote that the commission has taken in the last two years with which you feel very strongly, either strongly agree or disagree with, and why?
Sorry. I really can't answer that. Uh, I'm just drawing a blank on that. Uh, I know there's been some decisions around the house that, that would be a good tourist attraction that there seemed to be no interest from the council on. But other than that, I'm not really sure.
Thank you. Bailey, please tell us about an action or vote that the commission has taken in the last two years with which you either strongly agree or disagree with, and why?
Um, the city council vote to change from the commission to the city council was so, so important. Not only is it going to bring public trust back by having more people in the seats, but it brings more diverse opinions and more conversation to the table, having three people rather than seven. Um, it also, Shelton's one of the last cities that had a three-person commission. So, it's really a big step for Shelton to actually make real change. And I think that's awesome.
Thank you. Joe?
Uh, to, to echo that, um, early on, when the, when the, uh, resolution was made to move from a commission to a council, it was, it did not pass. And I disagreed with that, um, wholeheartedly. Um, and, um, ultimately, um, the, uh, resolution yesterday evening with, uh, the resignation of, uh, the city manager, Ryan Wheaton, I also disagreed with. Um, and that's, that's my response.
Thanks. Thank you. Sam?
The one thing off the top of my head is, uh, when they voted and they dropped the, the sewer rates to hook up to the sewer. And, uh, and the building permits. That, that's a biggie. If, if they want growth, they need to, uh, drop them rates a little bit. I, I got a rental, and I remodeled an 1890 house. I did a lot of permits. And it ain't much, but it did help a lot when I was doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Bailey, you'll answer this question first. Again, you'll have 90 seconds, each of you, for your answers. Please explain why you're running for city council. What skill sets and experience do you bring to the table that makes you the best candidate for this position?
I think I addressed this a little bit in my opening statement. But I am running because it's so important for there to be fresh, new ideas and faces in Shelton. I feel like there's been the same handful of people that have been on the committees and worked in the city. And I feel like it's really important to shake things up and have new people in here. Like I said, I think my youth is a big asset. I don't have longstanding biases. I don't have alliances or enemies. And I think it's really important to have people in there like that. Plus, I have a really, um, diverse background in local businesses. I've worked at a chiropractic office owned by my family. I've done the billing. I ran the office. I've hired people. And, you know, and then, oh, sorry. And then we own a, um, Dirt Movers, First Choice Dirt Movers. It's an excavation company here in Shelton. And I helped do the bids. I helped open the business. And so, I have a lot of knowledge on local businesses. And I think that I can use that to be an asset to the city.
Thank you. Joe, please explain why you're running for city council. What skill sets and experience do you bring to the table that makes you the best candidate for this position?
Uh, when I opened, I talked about public service and my background in public service. Um, I think the last 10 years, working for the Department of Transportation, um, as an emergency manager, I was, uh, involved in a lot of local, um, issues. Um, and I obtained a pretty good skill set with, working with several partners, building partnerships to, uh, to ultimately, um, you know, prepare for, you know, bad, bad days, um, and, uh, and things that occur. Um, when I was, uh, talking with some coworkers of mine about running for, uh, political office, one of the, um, discussions I had with a coworker was about a state legislator that ran out of Lewis County, um, or was in, a state legislator from Lewis County, uh, several years ago. And one of the, the key factors that, uh, my coworker pointed out to me was that individual made it a point to communicate and talk to everybody who, um, either phone-called or, or met with this individual. And that is definitely something, uh, that I want to bring to the table. Um, you're being responsive and being able to be a sounding board for the public. Um, and that, that's my goal. Um, also, uh, one of the other pieces here to, to emphasize is, I'm not, wouldn't be an elected official. Um, you're, you're a public servant in this position. And, uh, that's what I'm hoping to do.
Thank you, Joe. Sam, why are you running for city council? And what skill sets and experience do you bring to the table that makes you the best candidate?
Well, I've been here 20 years. I, I've seen good changes. I've seen not-so-good changes here. Uh, I think the main thing is, I'm not a politician. I, I, I don't want to be a politician. I'm, I'm doing this for the community. Uh, another thing, I gotta, I stand up for myself. I have a backbone. I don't get pushed into choices I don't want to do. Uh, and for that, I, I'm a, I'm a builder. I've been, I've, I've seen a lot of things in this town. Um, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Steve, what do you, why are you running for city council? And what skill sets and experience do you bring to the table?
I bring passion. I have ideas. I have a vision of what this community could be. I'm not content to be a suburb of Olympia. I want to invest in our city. And I believe we need to have a transparent government. It hasn't happened. I believe we need, I will bring honesty. I will bring integrity. I will bring collaboration. I, I believe sincerely, and I can disagree without being disagreeable. So, I'm willing to work with a council to better our city. And I will listen to, I will tap into our greatest asset, and that's you guys, the citizens. You're the ones that really have the say in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll begin with closing statements. Each of you will be given one minute. And Joe, we'll hear from you first.
Shelton is faced with many issues. Uh, many of these issues are not uncommon to all of us. And we are all aware of what those issues are. My challenge to all of us here is let's move away from just being aware, and let's focus on understanding. Because only when we truly understand the core problem, can we commit to action or advocacy. It's time for Shelton to work on solving Shelton's problems. Let's do this together. Thanks.
Thank you. Sam, your closing statement?
Well, like I said before, I'm not a politician, and it shows. Um, I'm, I'm here for a change. Um, like everybody else been saying, Shelton needs to work together. Shelton needs to come together. I totally agree with that. I love this town. Uh, kids, raised kids. They're in college now. They're gone. They'll come back, of course. But it's just, I'm, I'm doing it for Shelton. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Steve Thompson?
I'm not going to read this. I went overboard last time. Uh, I feel honored that I have an opportunity to even sit in this chair. And whether I win or lose, I've gained a lot of experience. And I have realized that I can make a difference in this city. And I want to see a community, not a city. I want to see a community. And I will work my hardest. I'll bring my passion. I will bring my honesty, and I'll bring my collaboration to the table. And I will work and do whatever it takes to take this city into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, Bailey Syrick?
I actually want to use this time to- Actually, I want to use this time to not talk about me or the election at all. I would like to talk about Tyler Holinsky, WSU quarterback who just committed suicide yesterday. He had everything going for him and still felt there was no way out. And I feel like this is such an important issue we need to spread awareness for. Mental illness and depression are not things to be taken lightly, and the suicide rates are going up, and we need to bring awareness to this issue. And so I'm praying for him and his family and the WSU community, and I'm also praying that anybody who's struggling with the same issues can find the strength to ask for help. And also just be nice to everybody. You never know what someone else is going through. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take a quick break as we reset the stage for the candidates applying for Shelton City Council, seat seven.
Other TV providers force you to sign a long-term contract, then you're stuck with years of second-rate service. Hood Canal Communications delivers stunning HD, plus bundled savings on super-fast internet and home phone with no long-term contracts. It's all backed by an exceptional team of local service professionals. No contracts, no nonsense, just great service. Don't get stuck with a contract. Visit hcc.net to learn more.
Okay, before we get started on the last seat running for city council, I did, I did forget to mention that Charles Orthman is still a candidate for city council. He was unable to join us tonight.
I'm happy to introduce the candidates for Shelton City Council, position number seven. We'll begin with opening statements from Bob Rogers.
Thanks, John. My name is Bob Rogers. I've lived in Shelton about thirty years, been in the forestry industry for about forty-five. I recently retired from Green Diamond as inventory manager, where I was responsible for analysis and for both operational and financial plans on ownership of multimillions of dollars. I'm running this campaign focusing on three things, which kind of relate to the responsibilities of the council. That's being open, being practical, and being accountable. And to me, open goes well beyond the rules of Open Meetings Act. It needs to be a mindset of all public employees. It also needs to be extended so when we have a proposal before the council, that the council does the research and knows all the issues in that. So that whole proposal can be transparent to both the council and the public for voting. I'm also for practicality. Shelton needs practical solutions for both long- and short-term issues. We need to focus on making Shelton livable and affordable for current residents and really study hard any proposal that requires future growth. And accountable. The city council must take on the role of being accountable to the citizens, but it also must take on the role of holding the city manager and ourselves accountable for the goals of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Mary Eagleson?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for showing up. I like the turnout. It looks very nice. I'm running for city council because I believe in, in a change. I believe in diversity. I believe we need a bigger voice on the panel. We need younger voices. We need middle-aged voices, and we need some older voices. And yes, I'm one of the older ones, and I'm proud of it. I'm proud of what I've been through in my life. I've owned three businesses. The largest was a landscaping business. I've also worked for the largest pharmaceutical company in the United States, which is Perrigo Company in Alleghen, Michigan. I lived here in the eighties. I lived here in the nineties, and I came back almost a year and a half ago. And I went to the meetings and didn't like what I saw, and I thought, it's time for change. Shelton needs change. We need new voices. We need new opinions, and we need the people to come to town hall meetings. We have to have the voice of the people. You can't sit home. You can't be upset. You can't get angry because things aren't going right. If you don't come to the meetings, you don't voice your opinion. So please, please vote. And anyone that knows anyone that needs to register, in my briefcase tonight, see me after the meeting, I have the paperwork that you can give them to fill out to become a voter.
Thank you, Mary. Tracy Moore?
Hi, thank you all for coming. It is very exciting to see so many people out to witness this, and it's so, so exciting to have so many candidates. I'm Tracy Moore. I'm running for position seven. I've lived in Shelton for thirty years. I have three children and six grandchildren who still call Shelton home. I have recently served four years as your city commissioner of public works. I won my election by thirteen votes, and after spending four years and attaining a certificate of municipal leadership, I lost my election by fifteen votes. During the time that I was on the council, on the commission, I came, became aware that the commission was no longer relevant in today's time, when there are so many distractions, and that we were not run as an actual commission. And so I spearheaded the change to council, and thank you for everyone who voted. I was determined to found a more inclusive, transparent representative body with representation from each district. And I am asking that you return me to council so that I can be part of the actual beginning of the council. I have more to do to fulfill my goal in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. We'll get into the questions, which you'll have a minute and a half to answer-wise. Mary, you will answer first. In December budget briefing, it was relayed that the city's debt, mostly from loans to build the sewer treatment plant, stands at forty-three point six million dollars. And that the city's monthly debt payment are budgeted approximately two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars per month. Do you believe the city's debt load is a problem? And what are your ideas to move the city forward in terms of financial stability?
Well, that's a good question. We did, we do need and did need help with our sewer system and, and the budget. As it's my understanding from the meetings that I went to, the cost was going to be quite a bit larger for the sewage system that they were talking about. And that they brought the costs down to help the city. And, and that's a good point. Somebody behind the scenes is working really hard to bring, bring the cost down. I think we could do more with the budget. I think we could bring more to the city if we do more on tourism. If, on the 2017 budget, there's zero percentage for tourism. We don't, we're not spending any money on tourism. How are we going to bring people into Shelton? How are we going to keep Shelton Christmas Town? How are we going to do that? Because you have to do more to, to bring in the money to help pull down the budget. And if you're not doing that, big businesses aren't going to bring you in the money just, just to, to bring down your budget. Big business is going to bring you a problem of more problems, more money, bigger government, more headaches. So I think what they've done with the sewer system is great.
Thank you, Mary. Tracy? I can repeat, sure.
Please.
Certainly. In December's budget briefing, it was relayed that the city's debt, mostly from loans, building the sewage treatment plant, stands at forty-three point six million dollars. That the city's monthly debt payment are budgeted approximately two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Do you believe the city's debt load is a problem? And what are your ideas to move the city forward in terms of financial stability?
The current debt, of course, is a problem. I would much rather not have that. But I think we need to look at our debt as also a positive investment that we have made. And so that is less money than, that we have to invest in the future. That, I'm forgetting the question. As far as the future, I'm afraid I'm going to go off track here. But as far as the future, I believe strongly that we are in a good position as far as our budget, as far as our finances. We are passing all of our audits with great numbers. And we are paying off our debt as scheduled. We're meeting all our obligations for existing loans and for grants that we've received. We are being awarded more grants. And that is because of our great handling of the money and the fact that our debt does not exceed the ratio that we should have. Of course, we can do better any time of that. And as we continue to bring in new industry, we will be able to do better as far as the debt ratio. So we're in good shape, but we can do better.
Thank you, Tracy. Bob, I can repeat the question if you'd like.
I've got it, John.
Okay?
The city debt was one of the issues that I was issue-oriented at the city meetings prior to being more involved in the last six months. And the debt was one of the issues. Two years ago during the campaign, I looked at not the total debt, but the debt per appraised value. Shelton has a much higher debt ratio per appraised value in town than any other town, let alone the huge forty million-plus number. As anyone knows who owns a house, if you have a huge debt on your house and you have to make debt payments, you have to sacrifice other things. Now, a lot of this debt is tied to the enterprise services, the water and sewer. But if we didn't have that huge debt, our rates would be lower, and that's been one of the big issues in town, both for residents and for new building. So it, you know, it's passe now. We have to pay it. It's bonded. But it really constricts growth because of our rates. And to incur new debt for projects that may be very needy for the future, it's going to be a hard sell to the public, and it's also going to put the city in more financial difficulties. Because currently, we're spending about three million, you said two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a month on debt payments. A million of that, I believe, is interest. Two million is principal. And again, that limits, at least in these services, what you can do with funds because you have to outlay that payment.
Thank you, Bob. Our next question is going to relate to some information that was sent to you prior to the debate. And looking over, each of you have the, the chart in front of you, but you were sent it again prior to the debate. Looking at how the city has allocated its resources in the current budget, please explain how you feel about the current allocations or percentages spent in different areas, and what changes you would recommend. And we'll begin with Tracy.
Okay. Many of these are fixed, and we have no choices about our obligations for the certain percentages of our budget. Where I would change is I would, as Mary said, I would allocate more money for tourism. I would make sure that our general fund is kept healthy and is kept with the largest percentage that we can put in there. We have to be responsible in keeping our general fund healthy because it funds so many things. That is what funds our police. That is what funds many of the social services that we don't have because we have not made that a priority. That is where the funding for housing and drug treatment for all of those would come from. So I do believe that if it were a perfect world and I got to make decisions, I would keep that general fund as healthy as we could possibly make it and look at it with more of an eye for what is really, truly important. What is of the greater benefit for our city? And make sure that decisions are made that reflect the greatest benefit for the most of our citizens and our businesses.
Thank you, Tracy. Bob?
The current allocation includes quite a bit in the two, the water and sewer components, which, which are, you know, do the debt service. It has to be paid. There's no reason they can't look, and I'm sure the city is, looking for efficiencies in the operations of those two facility, or the two parts to gain efficiencies. The general fund is really the fund that supports everything else as far as police and the city services that we think as city services. Until more income comes in, we need to really work on efficiencies of the city, which I know they have been. I know the road department's working on efficiencies. I know the treasurer's office has worked on efficiencies, such as online billing and things like that. The other parts are fairly small, and a lot of those are already allocated. The fireman's pension, some of these things are just a given cost that you cannot have much control on. So without digging deeper and gaining efficiencies in the cost currently or gaining more income, you know, the pie is kind of cut up, and there's, there is some fringes where we worked on to allocate it differently. But the large components are these fixed costs that we kind of addressed in that first question.
Thank you, Bob. Mary?
I see a couple of problems with our, our budget that you people don't see because you don't have the paper in front of you. But two of the main things, one I already spoke about, which is our tourism. No percentage for tourism, nothing. The other one is zero percent on library endowment. If, if we don't take care of our libraries, how are we going to teach our children? Where are they going to go to get a book? Not everybody has technology. A lot of poor children don't have technology. We need to do more for our libraries, and we need to do more for the tourism of this town. We have to take a little bit of that general budget. And we have to put it towards two major things that are going to make this city a better city. And I don't want it to be an Olympia. I don't want to see Shelton turn into the big city because that's not what brought people here. That's not what's bringing people here, and that's not what's going to make people stay here. So I think we need to change some of this budget. I think we need to put it into a couple of factors that are the most important for our city. And that's what I feel.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you all for your answers. With that, we'll begin our closing statements. Each one of you will be given one minute, and Bob will hear from you first.
Thanks, John. Just like to thank everyone for coming, and those are going to be seen on the web and for the chamber for putting this on. Been to many of these, and these are very informational, and I appreciate that effort. I think the underlying theme of my discussion tonight with some of these questions is the financial status of the city. And it involves both income and expense. And I think income is one thing we need to work on more. The city, I think, just started an economic development plan focus this year. But that's one focus that I think we need to have. And when I hear about the Timmer Street being dead and tourism the solution, I'm not saying one or the other. I think we need a mix of all on the waterfront, in town, in this county. I was at a meeting where Hood Canal Pioneer presented their school proposal, and one of their focuses is on aquaculture and forestry as a theme. That's what Mason County's resources are. We can move our city to downtown Seattle. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Mary?
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming, everyone. Shelton is a really nice place, and there's so much we can do. We, we have to look at what we have here, our resources, our forest, our fishing, our campsites. Things that will bring people into Shelton. They will spend money if they come, which is good for Shelton. And I'm, I'm just pleased that, to have the opportunity to be part of this process and to be who I am. And to be a mother, a grandmother, a great-grandmother, and a person who can sit up here in front of you people and want change for the city that we're in. This is a great city. Let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy?
Okay. This is not our typical election season. We have some major problems that have been identified with our city government, and we need to address those. I'm really so excited once again that the council passed, and I'm asking for an opportunity to serve on the council. Having the experience I do, you know me. Having the experience I do, you know me. I'm outspoken. I'm honest. I'm independent, and I'm strong, and I will stand up for you, and I'll work for the greatest, greater good for every person within our community. I'll stand up for what is right. We can be so much more by integrating more involvement from our citizens for doing the right thing, for insisting that our leaders do the right thing. And I ask you all to please, don't vote for someone, don't vote for me because I'm your friend or your neighbor, or you know me, or you don't like me. Vote for the people who will do the best for you.
Our thanks again to each of you, both in person and online, for joining us. We appreciate our candidates also for joining us tonight and sharing their platform. I hope that you all found this beneficial. My thanks, of course, to the Chamber Government Relations Team, the Board of Trustees, my co-host, John Lester, and to Mason Web TV and Hood Canal Communications for live streaming tonight's event.
As president of the Chamber Board last year, I'd like to address some of the noise out there concerning those questioning the ethics and integrity of the chamber. I've served with this great group of volunteers and paid staff, and we're not perfect, but with large hearts, working together with, at times, different views, but always, for the betterment of our community, not ourselves. Please, if you've got some concerns, feel free to stop. And the current president, Will Johnson, is right over here. I'll be over here afterwards, be more than happy to speak with you privately to address any of those concerns. We thank you again for all coming tonight. Have a good night, and please drive safe out there.